Councilors, the time has come for the start of the good news committee. Welcome everyone, welcome to the media, it's good to see a full media bench over there to hear all the good news. We'll kick off, I won't hesitate to get the good news out. Firstly, we have no apologies, everyone is here. Confirmation of the agenda, are there any desires to change anything on our agenda? If not, I'll move that the agenda is confirmed. Seconded Andrew Wiley, Paul O'Bea. My declaration of interest is just there for noting, if anybody has a conflict, please be aware of it. I do have a conflict with this first item, so I'm going to hand the chair to councillor Bez. I am the Chair of the Digital Community Trust and therefore involved with the Digital Office. I'll make that the Chair and hand the chair to councillor Bez.
I was, to be quite honest with you, a little formal. I'd like to run out and forth, the need for the Digital Office update. We've got Josh Jenkins with us, welcome Josh, and also Stuart, who's been a lot of work for us. This is just a verbal cut down from what I gather, so obviously you gentlemen to bring this up today.
Thank you for the opportunity to come on and talk to you today. So we've got a few slides through and a few videos to read, I'm quick to the point, so please jump in as you may at any time. So what I want to do is explain who we are and what we've done against the digital strategy for us this year particularly, and our plan for the future as well. So before I go too far, this is the team. So you know me Stuart, this is Josh and Jeanine, our third person, she's our 2020 Trust, Houston Harries coordinator. She can't be here today unfortunately, but she's a member of our team. And then you've mentioned you've got governance team, so Mike Collins, Peter Hills, councillor Thames, and Mike Hart from University is the four in our digital trust trustees, who we work for. And we are a charitable trust as well. And most important box at the very bottom there are volunteers, of which we have numerous. And certainly for Giga Town campaign we've been increasing now over the last few months. So the volunteers have done enormous amount of work for the Digital Office and we're so grateful for what they do. So we deliver the areas of our digital strategy. Now it has been three years since that was developed, but certainly we're very much following the principles, names of our strategy. And there's two main sort of areas here that we are focusing on, this is economic and business focused. Absolutely, we're here to help the economic growth of this city, help businesses understand the benefits of going online. And our recent work on there has been really focused on that objective. At the same time, we're also here for the community, so we're increasing the access to our community, to the internet and growing skills. The two sides of what we're doing, economic side and business focus, also the community as well in that chair. So I'm just going to sum up our projects now, they're each, so we'll show you what we're doing in sort of more detail. So the first one is our wifi experience project. So wifi, free wifi is coming expectation now for businesses to the city. Absolutely, all the work we do here, there's strong evidence of the declaration that people will come to the city to have free wifi. So we wanted to focus our wifi around the experience of doing things in the great tractions in the Eden. So for example, you go on the My Heart Boat, you're there out in the beautiful peninsula and you see an Albatros bike ride. You take a great picture, why not share that experience right there, right now? So that's what we do, we have a wifi access point on the My Heart Boat, first we rent it in the country, where tourists take a photo of the great tractions, share with their community back overseas. So instantaneously we're creating access to the internet and giving our tourists, businesses, a unique opportunity to share their information to the internet and to the followers and the social media connections on the internet. Same time we call it, back from the train ride, S station, free internet, unlimited in size, you can share that experience with your colleagues over the air. And this is where the internet's going, our wifi, it's the experience you create, not necessarily technology. Same for them or I too, and we have the Albatros company doing on soon, free charge, innovation here, our partner here. So we also have a chorus too, so we're quite very fortunate, we have direct connections to the chorus, who of course leading the Autropathic Orbital Roundabout around the city. About the beginning of this financial year, we canvassed the community and said, where are you working at home? Because of course, finding the UFB is the businesses, the schools, pretty much done now, right? Schools are all connected, businesses mostly connected now in the CBD. But then moves in the next 12 months, to longer, to focus being at home, to provide fast broadband at home. So we want to be ahead of the drag there, and so we asked the community in the Eden, say, where do you work at home the most? And we found certainly a question around the city that seemed to be people congregating and working at home, like Andrew Bea. So we spoke to chorus, said, right, in your rollout plan, you haven't considered that, you consider that just as a population increase? So we want to focus on this, we're working at home, how we push the rollout programme accordingly. And also because of our work at chorus, as much as the cabinets installed would be, to increase the rollout process. So really pleased where we can prioritise and maximise the rollout programme for the Eden. The other thing we do as well, it's quite not worth of, is that we have lots of questions, lots of phone calls from the community, asking when the UFB RPI is happening, what their communications options are, from their particular education and business or community. So lots of phone calls as the rollouts are underway. So that's about connecting the city. Here's a few of our hotspots, locations you recognise, I'm sure. All right, enabling our city, very pleased to announce that we've also just finished a project with Google, Inseta New Zealand. We managed to get sponsorship for creating an assessment tool called Digital Journey. Digital Journey was created by Digital Office, designed here in Dunedin, and is now being marketed through the Eden. Very pleased to have the Targa Polytechnic as our training partner here as well. And why we're doing this, right, so the internet is transformational what it can do. So we knew this for a long time, but we just wanted to tell the community, the world, about this opportunity. So Google commissioned a report, which went out to the businesses and said, what is it the internet's doing for you? What are you getting from this? And the result of that was that they reduced the report, which came out last Monday, and it's showing that businesses are more productive by going online. There's a $34 billion opportunity for New Zealand to transform its businesses to be more online. There's a 6% productivity gain in the first year of being online, all of this report, which is on the screen card, click on it. So great report, it really highlights the fact that going online is good for business, economic growth of the country, and of course here, it is an opportunity for us to do more stuff online and grow the Eden businesses. But the question comes back all the time, great, want to go online, how would we go online? What would we do online? What's the steps involved with going online? So we created a Digital Journey assessment tool. And what the tool does is it lets you go through a series of questions in a very intuitive way, and gives you an action plan at the end of it. And the action plan tells you step by step what you can do, how to use public viewing, how to use social media, how to do your planning and stuff online. This is now available and it's been used by the sort of businesses so far. It's been out for a week and it's there to help businesses understand the opportunity for going online. So very pleased to have that tool out here. We're now allowed to work with legal businesses to really get that across the line. And Josh, myself and our digital ambassadors are here to help and give our time free of charge to help the businesses understand what to do. It's a great opportunity from an economic point of view. Targa Polytechnic are actually creating online tutorials and videos, and they're really excited by the opportunities for sales. Tablets in schools, so we also wanted to, if you understand, photography is moving us really fast paced. It's one of our programs, tablets in schools. We have a tablet reuse scheme, where businesses or individuals can donate a tablet device to Digital Office. We cleared it all down and put some basic apps on there as well. We've had apps sent from us from America, there are a few around the country, and a few businesses now have given them directly to us as well. 35 devices so far have been donated, and they would like to increase that this coming year. But we don't just give them to the school, the worst thing you can do is give a device to a bunch of school kids, they don't use it. That's the wrong message, we want them to use it well. So what we do is we form little IT clubs, I'll show you videos on a second, for an IT club. And we're inside, working with the school kids to understand, how to use it, understand it. How do you connect to the internet, how do you do it safely? How do you work out what the best thing is with your device long term, do you use it at home, use it only in the school network? How do you connect the devices together to share print and share technology? To really understand it, not just using apps or services. So it's been a very successful campaign, and we have this in a number of schools across the city. And certainly on the areas that we'd like to expand in the future. So here's our tablet school in action.
I give my tablet to my sister, because I don't have spelling game, reading game, maths games at home, for when she comes to school for them, and she's the one who, before she becomes, so she knows more when she comes to school, unlike some people. And I think it was fun having the iPad at home, you can download whatever you wanted, and a couple of learning games for school.
This iPad here has been donated to you from the Digital Office, both, and it's going to be up to Bathgate School, Nud food, Ross collection. So you saw the kids there formed a group called Nerd Herd, it wasn't my idea for the name, but that's what they called themselves. And they've given these devices, we let them set the rules, let them understand the logic, let them set the rules. The one of the rules that got in place, that's the advice you can go home to your sisters or mums and dads and so on. So an old device in our town is now being used again by the school. It's great to see them understanding technology and just using it, and that's a real point of difference. The next one is our Digital Journey's tool.
The Digital Journey itself is really easy to use, even people who aren't technos savvy. It keeps your attention because of what's going on on the screen at all times, and it leads you through in a logical order. You don't get lost, and I like to think of myself as being up to play. Every now and then questions will pop up and you'll, I was slapping myself metaphorically expecting, for not having thought of that topic, and even those areas like social media and how their plans go within a strategic plan.
So this is just for Mr Gilbert's, I don't know if Gilbert's, that's a great bakery in South Island. And they've captured this tool being used by the bakery, and from this, he's got an action plan figured out, and he's started looking at ecommerce and making credit cycles more responsive. So he's moving into that 2% productivity gain that can be gained by using the internet, and that's great to see. And we love the need for businesses to do this, and if we can help, we're there to help this productivity gain be realised. So, next to my list, additional ambassadors. So we have a team of amazing volunteers behind us, they are all IT experts, and they give their time free of charge to help the community, whether it's nonprofits, trusts, businesses, and even individuals about using the internet well. They've given that many hours and committed time this year. They've helped with website design, they have to use technology, how to use a product or service, how to give them some advice about maybe making an all sensible decision around purchasing equipment. And we also do small scale software development projects as well, again, and all in a voluntary capacity, to really help raise the capability and confidence using online technology. In South Island, we have our High Tech Youth Network project still being developed around the practical school, and it's making steps forward there, it's taken quite some time to get that going, of course part of the rebuild of the school. We're really pleased with that being one. Indeed, we're doing a South Island High Tech Youth Network in, well, stations in South Island, it's only one happening, so we're pleased with that progression. So the other thing we do as well is that we realise that, we went into schools, we realise that the kids are pretty smart nowadays. They can understand technology, they're pretty good on the use of technology when it comes to iPads and so on. So we want to provide training at the teacher level now, because some of the teachers don't really understand how they can use it in their classroom, or how they can, or have the confidence to use some of the smart technologies. So we are part of a tech teach, and through our nationwide training programs, we provide free training. So we provide training with iPads, Android devices, we provide this at Queen, Springfield, Logan Park, DCCA, the Childcare Association, and Waltsa Co. So we focus on small workgroups, trying to understand technology and how to use it better in the schools. So it's been very successful and it's starting to grow across the city as well. Our next focus is our retirees as well, a whole segment of the community hasn't been addressed before, we're focusing on that in the future too. So we also have our additional labour training program, which we provide free of charge. Again, it's to taking that next step about using the internet for businesses, probably. And we're here to help there, we had a tourism focused one a few months ago, we'll be focusing on how the tourists and people could use the internet. And of course, the Houston Harries, Jeanine runs for us, we have 100 computers per year, given to the families, it's always a waste of this. And they have internet access at the same time, and then also we have stepping up as well, which is our advanced training. And the last one here is our new BYOD scheme, which I think I advise to you all for the graduation next week, where we have 60 families, first in the country again, who have subscribed to a tablet program, where they're paying it off month by month, a small amount of money, $20 or $10. They're given a tablet device, which they can use at home as well. So really moving forward technology and helping the community get access to devices by tablets. Something called Giga Town, who've heard about it, but it's getting some huge momentum around the city now. So currently in second position, so a huge jump up from last time, through some late nights and lots of hard work, and lots of twitters and tweets and all kinds of things happening. Josh did an amazing job on this. So really I enjoy the community here and providing the educational or fast broadband that we do. We're working in schools, we have all kinds of school assembly meetings and workshops for the schools to help them understand what we can do with technology, and get them motivated by this campaign. So our videos are being produced for businesses and so on, really they're excited by fast broadband. Of course that ties into Digital Journey product too, to show what can actually happen. And we've got a huge amount of volunteers around the Burness City, I mean, we're starting to put down hours here, I've probably lost track now, but I think the numbers of hours, if you can guess on it, is now Josh, the numbers of hours? It's just so many, it's incredible, we just get overwhelmed by the commitment and support of our volunteers here. They're getting really excited by this, there's 7,000 people on Facebook for example, who are following the campaign. This weekend Josh was down there building sand castles, the sand camel competition and so on. So it really is quite a motivational how to get behind this campaign. Substained by a local company, who produces video and business opportunities to help fundraise via buying, this panimation here, and that goes into our campaign, which is about Giga Town. And it's great to see us being in second position. The work together there really is a good way of finishing off the slides here, because that's our presentation here, because that's what it is. We're coming together and excited by the opportunity to have a fast broadband. So the future, so we want to do more of course, so this is, our real focus is to expand our current services. We've got some real momentum going on, some exciting projects. And Digital Journey we think is a great opportunity to boost the economic contribution the city makes around the ICT sector. This is a tool that we use in bakeries, in cafes, in the tourism sector and so on and so on. And by using that, we really believe that we can boost the Eden. We've got some projects around the rural connectivity part of it, and we're looking to get some funding here to create some rural hotspots. So outside Dunedin, just the boundary of the Eden city, the Autropathic Orbital Roundabout scheme stops. And past that point, there's the rural broadband initiative kicks in. And of course that's normally as good as quality of service at the centres. With things divide happening between the rich connectivity in the Eden and then this resiliency in the rural sector. And the focus for us in the next year is to really try and see if we can bring that together and enable some of those rural communities to participate in some of the fast broadband services. This project is, I think it's got a huge potential for this, this will be. And then we also want to expand our tablet scheme too, and we feel as if that whole idea of not just teaching kids to use apps and create powerpoints and go online, it's more about understanding technology. And that's, if you look at the economic outlook for New Zealand, they're working out for the ministry a few weeks ago, the sectors that want skills in are ICT, ICT, ICT. So we're trying to do this through our tablet scheme, is to really get people to understand technology, understand the rural technology, and then bring it in those schools very early on. So we've also got a fundraising campaign kicking off for the next few weeks, we want to raise 50k for a geek camp idea, where we want to get some of those outside school hours done, where people have access to technology and exposed into things like animation, digital TV, digital radio and things like that. And we're trying to kick off a fundraising campaign to have our first geek camp here in the Eden. And that will focus on teenagers, and get them quite excited again by the opportunity in this space. And also we have a part-time Digital Office role in the Targa region, which is bringing up funding across the Targa councils. These are some of our sponsors, and pretty incredible really. And we've had a, you know, a lot of organizations that we accept all we're doing and happy to help us on this journey. And we're growing this to really bring back some of the projects or opportunities to the city. For example, Digital Journey, this fly here, developed in the Eden, product was founded in the Eden, and all the sponsorship ran out from Google and Inseta New Zealand, it was all brought back to the Eden. Return investment, so this is what we get each year at the moment, from the council, a 60 grand operational grant, and that's used to keep lights on. So we've direct funded the projects, so we have in the region of $305k brought in from the other projects, like our training tablets, hotspots, and some voluntary hours there, and also things like the Google sponsorship mentioned before as well. As a return, and we have proposals out there as well, for $250k in the future as well, all project based on there. So we are going to look, go back to the annual plan process, see if we can support that operational grant, which I think we'll probably return back in the next few weeks and talk to you about that in the annual planning process. And that purely is to keep lights on, so it keeps lights on, it keeps us, our services operating, it keeps Josh and Jeanine and myself as part of this digital office, and that's what it's there for, to keep core operational funding. You don't get funding for operational stuff when you do project funding, it's all project based. And all that project based funding goes straight into the project, there's no other funding besides that. And so we think it's really exciting, I mean, it's been, it's taken us some time to get going and get things off the ground, it's been exciting year this last year, we've got some real great potential projects in the future. We're thrilled by getting some of the business folks off the ground, and a huge amount of work, most of it volunteer work, from our volunteers and ourselves to get to where we are. We're very proud what we achieved, and I think next year can be hoping it will be a big growth here for the offices. So that's me. In that chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much Stuart, Josh, is there anything you want to add at all? No, I think that's yours. Questions, councilors, any questions to the tour?
Do you Stuart, do you work for us directly, for the, sorry, sorry, not for us, for the digital office directly?
I work for the Digital Community Trust, so I work, I send this to Josh and Jeanine, we all have contracts with the Digital Community Trust, so yeah, that's.
Are you now living in Christchurch?
Yeah, so what we, what we do is that we want to tap into, we want to create a entity that can get some serious funding. So what we've done is we've aligned to the Digital Leadership Forum in Christchurch, the less of a agreement between the two, the community trust, and then the other, to say we'll just support each other in projects. The whole vision being here is that if we can go to the funding bodies, and a bit of funding bodies say, right, let's create a funding proposal to the whole of South Island, that would be amazing, a chance. So we're doing that from together, we're together for this sort of things, probably for the future though, it's not by now.
So do you see us having somebody who lives in Dunedin, jumping out digital office in the future? Or are you intending to keep on doing that from Christchurch?
Yeah, so if you, okay, if you want to, I mean, I got it in Dunedin for a reason, that was very sad at the time, I don't want to go into that, it's just a personal decision. My commitment to the Eden is 150%, so to the point that I have started a business in the Eden, which I formed about four months ago, in Dunedin, rather than being elsewhere in the country. Now, what I do is I commit my time to the digital office, I have a lot of project expertise. If you know how I work, I work from my laptop, and so I run meetings through Skype or hangouts or whatever. So where I am, the conditions don't matter, and that's something that's really important to say, is digital office is a virtual team. So me and Josh talk regularly, daily if not, and how we do that is through our digital technology. So in our funding proposals, the annual plan process, we wanted to create the role of a full-time person in the city. We never had that for the last three years, it's been a part-time role. My contract is one day a week, and you look what we've just presented right now, it's impossible to do that one day a week. So we've had a massive return on our time. I asked this question the other day, or so, I don't know if you answered the question, it might be, some council members said to me, how many tiny points to this? I said, well, today was a Sunday, I emailed back and said that we have Josh and Peter Hills, our trustees, going to a small rural community, doing some work, a digital ambassador configuring laptops for Tyree High School, and myself doing the same for Bathgate High School. So there's a huge amount of policy effort goes into this for the return.
Councillor Wobbin. Through the chair, firstly I'd like to commend you for the Digital Journey, I think that's come up really well. I did wonder, given that there was, and I can't believe that it hasn't existed until now, to be honest, but given that the objectives of the digital office are both economic and community, I wonder why it's pushed so heavily at the business community? And I can report that the council's social services, for example, see a huge potential in that platform for their membership and for the nonprofit and community organization sector.
Yeah, it's a really good point actually, and you know, you know what, in some ways, I put a proposal forward to Google for sponsorship. I did it down the business sector, knowing that there's a support going to come out and say there's an opportunity for New Zealand to grow in productivity terms. But since then, some of the earlier doctors have these schools and have been in the sector, as I mentioned before. So we've taken on board and we actually think there's opportunities to tone down the business part of it, I would say it's an organizational opportunity. So I think that's a really good point, and I was absolutely thrilled to see a school come back to us today and say, hey, we've done the assessment, and now we're looking at cloud-based amnesty products, so I'm buying a server. So that was amazing feedback that was served for our school, so I think it's absolutely right, an opportunity.
You mentioned that a lot of this work is being done by local contractors, is that something that you have? Is there a procurement policy or other, is it intended favoring local providers a lot?
Well, we have to be, we do focus obviously on the Eden businesses, and so that's absolutely right. And I don't know if we have a camera procurement policy, but certainly when any projects that we do, we do it for Eden. And I don't know if we have a camera procurement policy, but certainly when any projects that we do, we do it for Needen. So tech, Needen business, background of this has been done from the Z designer. Are looking at having a digital journeys coordinator established. And that role will be private policy manager, digital office, so it'll be here as well. So very much so, it's just what we do.
But they are, those projects are tendered? And how does that work?
They were tendered to the point that we had to step aside if it was going to be a decision on a tender. So this was early when I went out to a Google's developer company and the Needen pitch as well. And then Google stepped down to make a final decision on this. We had to step away from that decision process. But our preference, of course, anything to do with Needen businesses.
When you say just around the figures, the operation ramp was 60,000, that's per year. That's over how many, and is that the other figure, which was 355, including in kind support or whatever, is that per year or over the last?
That's that one year, that's the year.
The school stuff is a curriculum based or is it solely extracurricular?
That's great. And in fact, that's something else that we just fall upon as a process. We did this tablet scheme at Bradford School. And mainly because they had that tablet stolen, it was last Christmas, we fired them straight away. And the principal came back saying, we're aligning this to the curriculum. It's, I think it's called self-empowered learning, technology. That fits it spot on because it's about understanding technology, it's self-empowered. We don't give them the rules, let them decide. And that's more in particular what it's done is it's tried to rate the applications and then provide the choices around that. So yeah, I don't know if it fits into the curriculum to any sort of degree, but they've aligned it to that part of the curriculum.
Do you see potential for the office in targeting the school's curriculum as a way of expanding?
We could well be there, yeah. Yeah, I think this, now it's proven to be a good project, we could look more into that, yeah.
And just one last question, please. I mean, access to devices is one part of trying to bridge the digital divide. At the other end, they still need ISP access to capitalise on that. How do you, what is being done or is anything being done to overcome that part of the equation? Is it something that you run into, that tension?
We, in some ways, when I first started doing this work, all the conversation very early on was about internet access. And I'm sensing that that problem is diminishing slightly because there's more ISPs in the city, you know, there's more digital providers in the city now. The price of internet has come down substantially from what it used to be. And so I don't know if there's the same amount of community concern around internet access. Our Queen's project example, we did that two years ago. And you know, we're not going to do it anymore because we're sensing that there's a lot of people who have got access to internet now. It's about better use of it. Thank you.
Councillor Wood.
Thank you. And I'd just like to reiterate the credit or three to your team, not just for the digital journeys project, but I think there's a whole range of things that you do. And one day a week is laughable for the amount that you're doing. Two questions. The first is the digital strategy when we first released it. I forget the four Cs, but there was capability and connectedness and capacity or something like that. And I just wondered of those four areas in which we identified that needed to be worked, which one to you, you feel the office has made the most progress on? Which one do you feel is the area that is still, yeah. Because I see a lot of good stuff, but I guess I have questions about how it aligns with the strategy and where we need to be emphasising our focus.
So four Cs were content, capability, connected and confidence. 2010 did that. So I think it's changed each year. And the first, the first year, we, the phone was going red hot with people asking questions about when are we getting U F V? How much is it going to cost? What is it going to do in my street? My business is being held back by this, when are we getting it and so on? And so connected was the first priority. And so we, the first year, the biggest success in the first year was getting callers to come and talk to us and for us to prioritise your view programme. Everyone else says it happened, it just happens. Tell your programme, it happens in year two, year three. We're saying, no, no, we want to run this. So we had some great reasons to see the council and the trusts and so on. And so listen, how can we manage this well in our city? So I think the first year was connected. And that was our first, and also Queen giving us as well our hotspots in South of Needen there. In fact, we pushed South of Needen as a priority, I think she realised that. South of Needen was connected higher and faster than it originally planned. The reason why is forced to see it as a priority. We pushed in that direction and that was the one that 40% of our sources were reversed year by year two. So connected first. I think that what we're focusing on more now is the capability part of it. And you know, the internet is here, it's transformational, it does from a social point of view, from a business point of view. But let's use it well. And that's why we spent a lot of time, this is my Christmas and New Year, a digital journey, because I think the potential there is massive. And so we've moved on from the connectivity part to the capability part. So that's why I think we have a successful.
And in terms of content and confidence, I mean, it needs to a degree that will flow out of people being capable, the capability being here.
And content, I mean, the GigaTown videos you produced, you really highlighted that. There's some amazing services out there that businesses can tap into. And we're trying to weave more together now as a single message. And so we can run a chamber of commerce meetings or economic grant meetings with businesses or one-to-one meetings, they're right. Here's, you can connect now, here's something that is used, here's the assessment, so I can give examples that will do pretty well.
And I guess my other, my final question, the chair, is we currently don't have budget in this year's annual plan for this project. What is the outcome, what would the, would the digital office survive if we didn't fund the office? Are other TLAs contributing, given that this is, that we do have no Tago-wide synergy now? And what level of funding would be required to ensure that it did continue to operate?
Thank you very much. It's, I mean, when I heard that we weren't having any process here for funding, it was a bit dark days for most of you. We won't, we can't, the office, in reality, it's, for what we have now, it's really difficult to do what we're doing. So we won't, in that sense, be operating if we don't get core funding. Our projects will see through with will and effort, in reality, it would be doors open. I'm going to say that we have got the Tago thing, so we are trying to increase the Tago position, which we've asked the other TLAs to put in some funding for that too. There is a huge amount of work happening in the country region, which potentially is an opportunity. And across the country, we have Auckland, who have got three of us full-time in this role. Comore, you must, rest of the country is grabbing this and seeing the opportunity is most critical. So from the Needen point of view, it would be a very dark day if we don't get the funding. What we want to ask for is 100K per year, three years. And that's what I put into my annual plan process. That's the full, the full-time role in the Needen. So what Josh is doing, carrying on for the next year, covering all the operational costs in that figure. And then we'll really take forward these projects. And I think having that person full-time in the city is a game changer.
And my, the other part of my question was, are other territorial, local authorities, other councils in the region funding any of the operational costs?
Not, not, I mean, they haven't, they go through their annual plan process. So if we create a part-time role in a Tago, then they're going to fund that independently. So they do all putting in cash for that role. And I don't doubt for that, of course. But I think my, my little point is that around the country, people have started to grasp this whole idea, that digital stuff is what needs to happen. Less of the IT spending, because IT is the lifeblood, it's going to turn it off. It's more about how you can engage and the community and using it well. And my business is absolutely blown away by some of the countries or the councils that are getting us on board with increasing positions like this. So I really support the proposal within here and let's hope it gets across the line.
Okay, Councillor Bender, but I'll just follow on, let my question go through, it's about funding. The 305,000, is there, I mean, where does that come from? Is that, is that value for the workers' group or is that actually cash or?
Absolutely, you know, so one of my roles is that I try, I try and secure funding for the Needen's digital office projects. So I went to my colleague from Dot N Z and went to Innovation Partnership. And we pitched this in our spare time to try and create a project to businesses to understand the opportunity. The funding on our training programmes, it's covered through a ministry grant that we achieved direct funding. So that money comes into the office and we're using it now to deliver our training programmes. So all that, 305, it's, I've forgotten that figure, but mostly it's direct funding, it's project funding, that's it. You have good money to the office. And the other part of it is some of the contribution in time from the ambassador scheme, from the tablets and so on.
And where are you going to get your 50,000 for?
Well, we've got this, we've got this campaign which Josh himself is working through right now. We think it's, it's unique. So we've created an app. It's a fun app. It's a fun app where this character travels around the country. And we are going to put it on the App Store. So again, showing what technology do. Creative, free time, free flight. And we're going to ask people to make a sponsor so they can, they can use the app on their iPhones, on their tablets. And through our Facebook site, we'll say, right, it's worth us making a $10 contribution or whatever it may be. And the money goes into our geek camp.
Councillor Bender.
Thank you very much for that. When you were last here, you said that you thought the Needen was still in with a chance of a GigaTown. Do you still think so?
Absolutely, I do. I really do, I honestly believe that, I mean, I'm really fortunate, I'm working around a country of time. And you know, the Needen's got the right combination of things. It's got the people here to make a difference, that's it. It's got the chamber, the EAs and the incubators in the city to help businesses grow. That's why I fund businesses in the Needen. It's got, it's got skills here, it's got university and poly bringing out some very bright people. And with the GigaTown infrastructure, the brand new GigaTown, the fastest and the happiest location. It's gold.
So what, what do you think needs to be done, who needs to be doing it?
Well, you, first of all, you're supporting us now, which is fantastic on the GigaTown campaign. It would love you all to obviously sign up and join GigaTown and support our competitions. We get support from the council here, the more the better, to make Josh's job go well. But really, I think, you know, yourselves as the voice of the community, if you can encourage people to go on to GigaTown, sign up, join our Facebook site and contribute to some of our campaign, it would be fantastic.
And for instance, Chamber of Commerce, some of the people are here, are they endorsed as well? Or is that, is that a leader that we could perhaps call as well?
I think the chamber have been a word of our campaign, but of course they're a target focus, or you know, our campaign is a target focus.
All right. You run Effectus Consultancy basically, or you work for Effectus Consultancy?
No, I did a long time, I did a year ago. And maybe more than that, so I was employed by Effectus and helped them form the Needen office. And but now.
Is there anyone else from Effectus that still works for the Tago digital impact just here?
To be honest with you, I don't know, it's a personal basis here, but I certainly made a decision myself. I wanted to get something back to the community. I've worked in IT since I was 20 years old and the CIO and so on. And so what gets you back is why I did this work, it's a challenge, I mean.
Councillor Wood.
I've got something else. If you're successful in your bid for greater council funding through the annual plan process, quite rightly, you would expect greater public interest in how that money is being spent. What kinds of, I mean, how does, how do you report, how do you measure your successes and what are your key performance indicators and how we keep tabs on effectively earning as much money?
I think that's, you know, so probably one of the things I'll take on the agenda a bit, I haven't been that good at reporting back to yourselves. And our website is maintained by myself and Andy. And you know, potentially that's only one mechanism to report back what we've been doing. We have got SLA, which we've gone through the final tweaks with EDU and Desert's team. And I think it's just with me to change a few of those criteria. And what I'd love to do is once we get that first out, is to come back and report what we've been doing and to show what we do with the digital office. So I think that would be one way of doing that.
So you two presently have KPIs, they're just not being reported?
We have an SLA, no, we don't, we have SLA draft, which we're working through right now. And then, well, I did try to report back to Digital Community Trust my progress and meeting every six weeks. And they marched against those, against all the climate fear, against the threat.
Oh, and those four pivotal ambitions, those four Cs.
Yeah, yeah, well, 2010, the strategy, you had it detailed, of course, that's still out there. That certainly is, the four Cs were four pivotal goals to achieve. And first, if nothing happens, if the office is off the ground, then we've got going now, you know, we'll be delivered against those four Cs, our core principles for our projects. So I'm not going to go away and do soon that isn't aligned to those four Cs. That's our core principles. And so my reporting back, the annual plan, annual report back to my trust as well. I'm trying to show a report which is given to the trust and I think also copied to the council as a PCC. And we refer back to the Cs and the goals and the strategy, you just colour code them where it will be around them. But I think that in some ways, we moved on a little bit as well. We still stick to the core principles that were in the strategy and the Tago system.
Thanks, gentlemen. And just which things were us leading in the GigaTown competition?
Monica's leading here. So Monica's got some huge investments, two, three or four, she's on track. Yeah, three or four of them, full-time, mini buses, they've got things painted all over the city. And they're, they're really hard to play in hard, they've got, I understand, they have private businesses funding that as well. So they're very much, they're pushing a lot of cash behind it to put themselves first, but we're second.
No further questions? Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for your presence here today. Thank you very much for what you're doing on behalf, our behalf. And we look forward to your submission through the annual plan process.
That's great, thank you, thanks so much. All right, everyone. Our next item on the agenda is the project update.
Do we not have to move that reporter's load?
That should have happened from twelve, but I don't think I can afford too much by allowing that to happen.
I'm going to move a bit of English.
Seconded, councillor McTavish. Any debate? If not, I'll put it, all in favour?
No.
Against?
No.
Carry? Okay, our next agenda item. And I welcome to the table Dr Christie and Yunkin. The floor is yours. Ni hao, da da hao.
Hello, everyone.
Ni hao ma? Just a bit of role reversal there, very awkward bit, Chris. Can I just introduce for those of you that don't know Ying, obviously she works within the EU. And I just want to say, given this project update report, there are many contributors to its success. I'm simply here to deliver and tell you about some of those successes, what we have done and what we're looking to do. And that is in addition to the report that you have tabled, which is really a trip report from our last visit up to Shanghai. It does contain a lot of the information that I'm going to talk about today. But I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that there are many of their team from within the Economic Development Unit that are here.
Development Unit that are here that are also part of its delivery. So it really is a good example of a collaborative partnership that comes under the Economic Development Strategy and I think is one where we've made a significant difference for our city. Thought I'd overview just some of the key sector areas that are represented both within that report and as part of the wider project Shanghai itself. So to start off with, within the civic side of things, obviously this year is the twentieth anniversary of the sister city relationship, which was established in October nineteen ninety-four. And there's been a lot of work taking place and underway currently for recognizing and celebrating those twentieth anniversary relationships. You'll be aware, hopefully, that Ji Fang is here from the Ministry, Municipal Foreign Affairs Office of Shanghai as part of a staff exchange programme. And we're delighted to have her here. She's been here for almost two months and will sadly leave us this Friday. So if you haven't met her, I certainly urge you to take that opportunity before she goes. Ji Fang is sort of linked for us in terms of that relationship and certainly her and her team back at the Foreign Affairs Office are very, very supportive of that relationship. And we're grateful for their assistance that they provide us when we're in Shanghai. In terms of the four key sector areas that we're looking at with Project Shanghai, just to cover off those four core areas, the education sector is, is one of those sectors that we've been looking at trying to grow economically off that sister city relationship. One of the initiatives that we've had in the last twelve months is the Mayor's Scholarship Programme that was put into play. We had ten tertiary students and twelve secondary students and supporting teachers come to Dunedin as part of that exchange. It was a great success and I'd like to thank the mayor for the initiative that he put in terms of that scholarship project. We understand there is significant support for that in Shanghai and would like to think that we can make that an annual scholarship. There would be very little we were changing there, which I think is testament to how successful it was. And I know from talking to some of the students and the staff that were involved in that programme, they, many of them will look to come back here for further educational opportunities. We also, in the last twelve months, have linked five local high schools with sister school relationships in Shanghai. And we're currently working on a sixth and we have potential for a seventh to be in place before the end of this year. And a lot of these things that we do, our role is simply to facilitate. So Ying and I can't actually make those relationships work. The thing, a lot of what I've got to say today is we can simply open the doors and provide those opportunities. But beyond that, there are individuals that need to take advantage of that for their own benefit. So we're seeing a lot of those schools progressing at different rates, depending on how active a programme they have got in place. But we're confident that we've put in place a platform that would allow those schools to, to develop long-term beneficial relationships for not only the schools in terms of culture, but also economically. The Shanghai Municipal Government also offer a scholarship programme for students throughout Oceana that have sister city relationships with Shanghai. And we are encouraging our local students to take advantage of that programme. We have recently, City Council has helped to fund an export education coordinator we see as dovetailing into this project particularly well. We've got a really strong focus in trying to get the educational uplift that this city believes is available to it. And obviously, China is an important part of that market in terms of growing our international student numbers. We've also toyed with the idea of investigating, opening, having a Dunedin presence in Shanghai, focused a lot around education, but also some of the other sector opportunities that we believe are available to the city. It's quite a new initiative, this, and one that I think the city should continue to pursue. And I'd like to see that opened. I think it would be a significant advantage to the city to have a physical presence in China. In the food and beverage sector, it's a particularly difficult sector to, to be introduced and trade to. But I'm pleased to say that we've been working with around eleven companies in this last twelve months, with, again, many of them at various stages of development in terms of contractual relationships in Shanghai. We have one that is very close to getting product away in terms of their first order. And we're quite excited about that because for us, that's showing that we can open a channel for some of our companies here in Dunedin to get into that export market into Shanghai. Within the technology sector, we have signed a sister chamber agreement with the Sijiu High Tech Industrial Zone. As a result of that, we introduced staff from University of Atago's Research and Development Unit to the Advanced Industrial Technology Research Institute, which we call ATRIP for short. Now, that's a division of Jiaotong University and that university has a presence within the Sijiu Tech Park. As a result of that, we've now got collaboration starting to occur between the two divisions of the respective universities. And we're confident that in time, we know that that's already dropping down to academics now starting to liaise. We're particularly excited about what that could mean for Atago in terms of ongoing research opportunities. Within the tourism sector, we have met with the Shanghai Tourism Bureau and have asked if they would be willing to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Dunedin City, which they have viewed favourably. And we're currently working on how we will frame a memorandum with the Shanghai Tourism Authority or Tourism Bureau, so that we can look to grow those respective international markets. One thing I would point out is when you sign an MOU with somebody in Shanghai, it is very meaningful, as I'm sure it is in the rest of China. We can be a little bit flippant about what might be in those agreements, but from the China end of things, if you put it into a memorandum of understanding, it is expected that you will deliver an outcome on that. So when we sign these memorandums, we are doing that with the full intent of being able to carry that out operationally. We're also working in closely with Air New Zealand, particularly around this being our twentieth anniversary, around how we can introduce some of the people from Air New Zealand and through our contacts into Shanghai. And obviously, we're looking at how that can benefit us from increased tourism market. Interestingly, point out for those of you that may be aware of it or may not be aware of it, the China market now is the second largest tourism market for Dunedin prison. So that, a lot of that report focuses specifically around Shanghai, but we're not limiting our opportunities to work with other cities in Shanghai. We have been through to Qingdao and you'll see in our report that a note there that we visited Haiya, which is the owner of Fisher &amp; Hike. To reinforce how important that relationship is to the city and to make sure that they were aware of what the city was doing in terms of being able to provide facilities for Fisher &amp; Hike to house the staff that are required to undertake that research and development work. I think the important point that came out of that for me was just how well-respected Fisher &amp; Hike's research team here in the city is, not just for the development of Fisher &amp; Hike product, but for all of the product that is under that Haiya umbrella. And they have multiple brands and I think our team here do a significant job in terms of advancing a lot of those products. We also have, through Qingdao University, established some links and some opportunities around education, research, and in particular, I think, looking at how we can look at some of the marine science that's been, I guess Qingdao's got an expertise in this. They call it their blue economy. And I think there's a really good opportunity for us to look at what they're doing around the marine science and how we can partner with them in terms of getting some additional benefit for our community. The Economic Development Unit of Council signed an agreement with the Qingdao Bureau of Commerce. And that agreement, we've discussed with the various parties in Qingdao, is really designed to look at improved economic cooperation between the two cities. And again, whilst we've got Project Shanghai underway, we're also mindful of the fact that we've got limited resources, but we will not limit our opportunities where we can see that they could be beneficial for the city. So we will, we will work with Qingdao Bureau of Commerce to establish what we can in the way of ongoing economic benefit for our city. And in Guangzhou, we've got obviously a lot of interest in terms of some of the investment opportunities in New Zealand and here in the city. And one of those opportunities, we have talked about in terms of the potential for an international scholarship. At this point in time, we're just progressing that with the particular investors. It would be fair to say there are a number of other investment opportunities which we are pursuing as and when we can. And I think the development of the investment prospectus, which you'll hear about next, is going to be a really good asset for us to be able to attach to those particular individuals. So that was really just an additional summary to the report we have been tabled. And we have taken questions on it.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Banderas?
The city of Dunedin has been raising funding visits to China now for some twenty years. And I know in your report on five point two, there's talk of initial projects, identifying initial focus. It seems that ever since I was a councillor, at least in two thousand and four, there's all this, these things that could happen. But we're still twenty years down the track, talking about initial relationships, MOU starting to occur with universities, et cetera. When is we going to see some real tangible results?
Well, it's, you make a good point, councillor. I think we've had twenty years of building relationships at a civic and cultural level. And this particular project came under the Economic Development Strategy specifically to look at how we could leverage that economically. So that's where it gets to the pointy end of how do we actually take some advantage of this relationship? And I can assure you that that twenty years worth of investment is the reason why we will get some economic benefit. I can categorically state that the companies that we've worked with in terms of introducing their product into that market have come about through the relationships that we've established. Without those, I mean, I, I don't know whether they would or they wouldn't happen. I can certainly say that we've saved them time and money in terms of introducing them into the market. And you will see and you will hear evidence of the successes of that over the next few months and into the future. So we've got down to the sharp end of it. And I think to be fair, we haven't been as focused on this economically as we should have been. And we can learn from that.
Okay, so through the chair, if you come back in years' time, there won't be initial projects and identifying opportunities, it will actually be, this has actually happened and we've actually done this?
If you look at the report and some of the things I've talked about today, we've got five high schools of sciences to school agreements. We have companies that are looking to trade into China for the first time. We have linked the research division of the university to a likely ally in China, which should result in ongoing collaborative research. So it's happening now, councillor. I don't have to wait six months to...
Thank you. Councillor McTavish?
Two questions. I'm currently grappling with learning German, so I think these are probably just lost in translation things. I'm, I'm curious about what precisely a friendly cooperative relationship agreement is. Is that tantamount to an MOU? Or is that something that has higher status than an MOU? Or is it something that is deliberately not an MOU?
Yes, it is. It's close to an MOU for the city. It's not a sister city agreement, but it's an agreement to collaborate on a number of areas where the city would want to partner with us. And I think it would be worthwhile for us to look at. Again, it's not committing you to a sister city, but certainly committing you to an ongoing relationship with their city.
Right. And in terms of, just looking at the Dunedin presence in Shanghai and the discussion around the office, I suggested alternative name to Dunedin Representative Office, which may not be approved in Shanghai. It wasn't clear to me whether Dunedin Representative Office wasn't going to be approved, or whether that was the suggested alternative.
That was the suggested alternative?
Ah, okay, yeah.
That's probably just the wording of that report.
Yeah, no problem. And in terms of, one of them, I can't find it right now, but one of the exciting things that I, most exciting things that I found in this report last night was that what seems to be the developing relationship between the Atago Museum and Shanghai, music, I think it's called Shanghai Museum, and having our director go over and speak there later in the year, particularly about our beautiful night sky, I thought was awesome.
He's just been, he's actually coming back.
Yeah, cool. Yeah. So in terms of that relationship, when is it that the next reciprocal visit might occur? Will that also be, will it be ties with the museum around the twentieth anniversary celebrations or, yeah?
Yeah, so we're looking, I specifically hadn't talked about all the cultural and sporting and other links that we've got with Shanghai. That this particular focus was just around some of the things we're doing economically. But there is a lot of activity occurring across all of those areas, not, not the least of which are the museums. Atago Polytechnic, you've just seen ID Fashion with some Shanghai students that have come out. That, that really is a result of a longstanding relationship that Atago Polytech has with the Shanghai University for Engineering and Science and other organisations that they, they know very well in Shanghai. I think all of those things are building up a bigger picture and just showing how important our linkages with Shanghai are. And, and there's many, many strands of them. We are looking at how we can facilitate the appropriate delegations to both Shanghai for recognizing the twentieth celebration. And the indications are that that could be towards the end of this year, around October. And we're also looking at hosting an inward group of people from Shanghai to likewise celebrate that relationship here. It's probably not going to be till next year.
Councillor Banderas?
Through the chair, and I'll ask the same question. I'll ask with all of the EDS projects. In terms of, this is a Chamber of Commerce and a DCC project?
We lead, we lead. And it's a cleverer project across all of those institutions in the Economic Development Strategy.
How does the resourcing of this project fold?
It's a tough question, that's it. It's, it's resourced with Ying working part-time from within the Economic Development Unit. I spend a fair chunk of my time on this project and I have other staff involved in this from the chain's perspective as well. And I'd have to say, I think there are a number of people within the Economic Development Unit and throughout the council at various different levels, including mayor and deputy mayor, who all contribute to it. So it's pretty, it's pretty hard then to measure just how much time is going into this particular project.
This, I mean, Project Shanghai, its current guise is obviously relatively new, but this relationship is near on twenty years old now. At what point do we start, or have we already started trying to leverage the experience and the relationships we have in China to tap into their broader economic networks through various nations or, or others?
Yeah, no, it's a really, it's a really good question. I think we've seen this as a template for how we could leverage off an existing set of relationships economically and then to use the lessons we learn from that to go into other markets. And simply, it's a matter of time and resource. And I don't think we, we lack the opportunity. We just need to be focused on delivering some very tangible outcomes, as councillor Banderas has indicated. We've got to prove ourselves in this project and then we can look at using that into other markets. But certainly very keen to leverage off that.
And the idea of tangible outcomes perhaps a better fit with the discussion focusing around economic development, a more difficult thing to do around cultural values and those sorts of things.
Yeah, it can be difficult in that economic development front too, because a lot of the deals that we are facilitating are commercial and in confidence. And whilst we can match make those opportunities, we can't always publicly display what's occurred as a result of that. What I can say is we have helped our companies significantly and we know there is an economic benefit that is accrued to the city.
Can we talk, then, are you having to take questions on the cultural aspects of this? Is it okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's probably too early to ask what form the representation of art culture sector will take in that delegation?
Would be too early, yeah. Yeah, so it's a work in progress at the moment, councillor.
Is there, has there been any conversations around commemorating the twentieth anniversary in public art space or capacity?
Yes, we are investigating gifts that could be exchanged and reflect their cultural significance.
And just lastly, I mean, the work with the museum, the relationship with the museum is great and the gardens are also referenced in this report. What is happening in the living, breathing art space in terms of that relationship, you know, through contemporary or, you know, art of music or whatever that is in a, in an historical or natural scientific?
Yeah, look, this is, I think this, that's an area where there's plenty of scope, plenty of potential for us to explore more. We, we make certain contacts into some of those channels in, in China, but we're looking here to have a Shanghai where we can bring out artists that can display some of their cultural benefit to us. And it's really And it's really just a matter of how we can shape that up and whether we can afford to bring them here. But I think there's some great opportunities. And we're seeing more and more exchanges occurring. And I think within the schools, you know, they also have that opportunity to share some more of the cultural side of things and explore the arts, in particular around their passions. So, you know, it could be groups, not just around sporting, but it could be around music or some of the other arts, where we see some of those exchanges being of mutual value. We also, in the school sector, there's, given the way that technology is now, there's a really easy way to do joint projects. So you could actually have students in Shanghai and students here working on a common curriculum.
Well, then the steering group, who would you turn to for advice on guiding that expanding scope?
I always turn in the first instance to Ying.
I mean, locally, I mean, if we're looking at how we can best represent arts and creative sector as part of this relationship locally, would you go to it?
To be honest, I wouldn't know where to start. I would, I would canvass it.
Me and Carl might be able to.
If I can throw a little light on that. I had some discussions with Dr Griffin with a view to utilizing the opening of the new museum that he has just returned from advising on, because he's been doing more than one thing in Shanghai. And there was an idea of coinciding the opening of the museum with a delegation from here as part of the twentieth anniversary celebrations. But I guess broadly, the value to Dunedin has been expressed in the benefit to various institutions like, we sent Ta'ma Maori, it's an exhibition from the Ta'ma Museum to Shanghai Museum two years ago. They brought back the Empress Dragons and a number of other, a couple of other exhibitions. And the other way, we are contemplating or exploring expressing the arts connection. We know that in the upcoming Festival of the Arts, there is a, deliberately been a Chinese act hired. So we'll be utilizing that, branding it along. And we've talked to the director of the Festival of the Arts, Nicholas McBride, with regard to that. So there's a number of initiatives seeking to express the twentieth anniversary at an arts and cultural level as much as possible, as well as at a business economic level.
Councillor White?
Thank you. John, how does Dunedin compare with other cities in New Zealand with their relationships in China?
I, I see a number of cities around New Zealand exploring the opportunity to have sister-city relationships with China in the same way that we saw that occurring with Japan back in the nineteen eighties. And if you look around New Zealand, most cities in New Zealand would have a sister-city relationship with a city in Japan. And what we're seeing now is China reaching out globally and looking at also forming a number of sister-cities. And we've certainly experienced that in New Zealand. There wouldn't be very many cities that I come across now that aren't either exploring or having recently signed up a sister-city agreement somewhere in China. What they haven't had is twenty years' worth of experience in dealing in that market. And we have, and I think we've not only got some very strong relationships as a result of that, but we've gained significant experience. And we probably, I think it would be fair to say, lead the country in terms of how we're trying to turn that into an economic opportunity for our city. And, you know, I think they all go hand in hand. The cultural, the civic and the economic are part of having a relationship with Chinese sister-city. But many of the other cities around New Zealand, I don't think it would be unfair to say, have got a long way to go before they get to the stage where.
Just following on from that, one of the things that impressed me on this delegation and I've noticed it changing in each delegation that I've been a part of too, is that the strong foundation that's been built up in getting to know each other. So perhaps in terms of the cultural side, it's developed the understanding. So in some sister-city relationships, they're based on business right from day one. And, and those who know doing business in China, it's about relationships. So we've, we've developed our position in Shanghai as a, as someone, as a city that has given a lot in terms of cultural input and linking without a focus on money at the beginning. And I think that's been really appreciated. We have very strong relationships. A classic was when we walked into the Shanghai Tourism Bureau. The lady who is one of the senior people within that bureau walked into the meeting and said, "I'm a busy lady. What are your questions and what do you want?" And we were straight into it. Now, typically, that's not the kind of meeting you would normally have. It comes about because we are a part, if you like, in the sister-city relationship. We rank among the top ten sister-cities of Shanghai and it has, what, seventy-four sister-cities? Seventy-five? Seventy-five sister-cities. So to be sitting, sorry, sixty-nine. Seven to five? Seven to five. So, you know, to rank up that highly, considering our size to Shanghai's size, I think underpins the fact that we have built such a strong relationship. And, and I agree with the comments that Mr Christie's made. Effectively, that, that provides a platform for business to really take advantage in the future. Any other questions, councillors?
I, there's a question to the slight broader sense and thank you for the report, but I find a sister-city relationship a funny one when it's reported on what benefits are to us. And I hope, I suppose, is understanding the benefits to China as well and what benefits they get from this relationship and how they find it easier to do business here as well and the benefits they get, which is the other side of the, that I'm not sure that we quite have wrapped in the report.
That's a fair comment. I can say that the Chinese, the Shanghai people in particular, really want to do business with us. So it's not as if we're doing something that's only one-sided. And certainly, your point is a very valid one. There is mutual benefit in all the work that we've been undertaking on these projects.
No, it's fine, it's not a criticism, but I, I, the problem that when you get a report like this, it sounds like we're very needy and desperate. And I think we've gone a lot to give as well. And I hope this thing is, yeah, too silent.
Any other questions? Is there anybody who'd like to move the recommendation of, if you did, councillor Law, to councillor Bez? Any discussion? Mayor Carl?
I'd just like to pick up on that point. I don't want the sister-city relationship that we have with Shanghai to be regarded either here or in Shanghai as some kind of goal rush, some kind of take, take, take. It has to be two-way. Any relationship which maintains mutual respect and affection has to be two-way. And we have worked in the last few years very carefully at that. And that is really one of the main reasons underpinning my initiation of the study abroad programme that we offer the students, both the tertiary students and the high school students from Shanghai, because we already were the beneficiaries of their programmes, which were quite generous. And we recognise, and Shanghai recognises, that we are considerably less resourced than they are. But we can make those efforts to keep it balanced. And I think that one of the reasons that our relationship is so strong is that it is two-way and it has been genuine. And I note in this report that the University of Atago representatives pointed out that their MOU with the General Tang Kong University would not have happened had it not been for the, for the sister-city relationship and the strength of it. So I reiterate what I mentioned before, that the benefits to our community are spread across a lot of the institutions that are of the second tier. So the schools benefit, our schools benefit, the museum benefits from, the Chinese garden benefits from. And that is just, it won't be all money, and it never will be, but you still have to put a value on what we're gaining and what we're giving. And as I say, I think it's really appreciated. And I don't want to be in a position where we are only thinking about what's in it for us, that would be church.
Councillor McTavish?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to pick on that, up on that theme briefly as well and just express a desire for future reports. Thank you for the content which is in here and I appreciate it, the first one. And I really, I valued reading it because it gave me a feel of more enlightened. But for me, the benefits that I want to see for particularly the new generations of Dunedinites are a real cultural sharing and that transcends any economic benefits as far as I'm concerned and will result in economic benefits further down the line when our young people are enlightened as to cultural differences and how to deal with them. And I've had the benefit of that through a cultural exchange. It was to Germany, it was during my time at school. And subsequent, through the following ten years, I've maintained a lot of relationships and I've drawn a lot on that time that I've had in that exchange and that cultural understanding that I've had, both in my professional life and in my own personal life. And I have no doubt that for any young person, for any person that has the benefit of a cultural relationship like that, there will be any number of benefits. And that's why I get so excited about, you know, the potential of things like the museum visits, like potential relationships between our research institute here around marine science and that of other researchers elsewhere. And I'd like to see future reports recognise the full breadth and scope of what is, what is possible in this relationship. And I think councillor Hawkins has raised some very valid points around perhaps other areas in which we could expand. So, yeah, I look forward to the next report and to pay consideration of some of those other issues.
Praxton, just a couple of comments from me. I think that the cultural relationship that underpins all of this has benefits both sides. And certainly, the focus of Project Shanghai is on the economic development aspect. And so perhaps there is a need for specific reporting on cultural aspects and we can, we can look at developing that. I think that there will be value both ways, particularly at the research level. Shanghai, like a lot of the major cities in China, have a number of significant issues that they're trying to deal with, all of which need advanced science. And I think there are some really good synergies with Atago University in terms of the areas that they are already working that, once we build that collaboration at the research level, down at professor level, there may well be opportunities for our scientists to help Shanghai and China dealing with some of the issues that they have that need research. So I don't think that we are seeing this as a one-way benefit for us. I think there will be good benefits both sides, as there should be. Councillor Law, would you like to write a reply?
No, I'm fine, I just, I read the report and I just think it's very, very good. So I think a rather polite, just support this.
Very good. In that case, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against Kerry. We now move on, councillors, to the red carpet, not red tape report. Welcome Des, welcome Margot. Would you like to speak to your report?
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a chance to update everybody on the red carpet report.
Margot, could you just pull the microphone forwards a little bit if you can? It's probably a bit tight there.
Is that me? This is a chance to update everybody on the red carpet, not red tape project, which is also the economic development strategy. We are a year into the strategy now and this is one of the appropriate projects that was initiated from the beginning. It's in the strategic theme one, business vitality. And we are looking, as the report says, to establish a council business relationship management model that will enable a proactive and business-friendly approach across DCC. So the DCC are obviously the lead here because the expectation is that we all make changes within our own council to the way we deal with business. We have three core projects that we've set up over the last twelve months. A relationship manager pilot, a business clinic at Lingal Public Art Gallery, which is the first of its kind in New Zealand, at the library. There's an investment panel and that has been operating since October last year. And you'll all have received a copy of the investment prospectus, which was made public last week. We're also looking into future work, including an investigation into the possibilities of a business survey. And that would help us to understand whether we're meeting the KPIs for the project. So that is up for further discussion and we'll be putting a report to this committee in June. And also a communication strategy which we need to start rolling out around council so that we can progress this project in-house and get some buy-in from our own staff.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Bensley?
Thank you. I'm interested in the relationship manager pilot. And I think this is a great idea and will ease the way for a lot of really desirable developments from both sides of the fence if there is one. Can you tell me, did the waterfront hotel proposal just miss the boat time-wise? Or did this approach fail for some other reason? Sorry, councillor.
Through, through the chair, and I think it was one of those, it was sort of in between, really, when we, when this thing, yes, timing-wise, yes. So that is sort of the classic type.
That answers the question, thank you. Councillor, you were just sitting out, okay, councillor Lewis?
I just want to take it up on just the one million dollar, probably over one million dollars. And understand how that works because if it's a business investment of a million dollars, then presumably there is probably more ability to buy in assistance as well. And understanding what, some really good ideas may even be students who, who don't have the capital investment, but they, that comes in the form of the IT. And just understanding how you draw that line, because it's a very big one of its dollars.
Well, this is a pilot, so questions like that will be something we would consider during it. There are other council processes that can work for people like that already in existence. So that's one of the reasons why we've got the business clinic at the library. So we've had, we haven't been operating that very long. We've had well over fifteen businesses come up and talk at that, at that business clinic and get advice about how to progress whatever ideas they might have for business.
I just want to take that idea further because are they business ideas run by community people or are they actually business investments? Because one thing that comes up again in your future project work that I'm concerned with, I know this is economic development, but the word business, sometimes it's, sometimes these things come out of community first. It's community initiatives that create business. I'm sounding like Teresa Stevenson now. She often said these things, but I'm, I'm... But I just want to make sure that when, that we need to do something like a business survey, it actually is for people in the community and not being too focused on business. Because I think, especially in the food industry, a lot of those things will come out of, out of community initiatives first.
Through the chair, I think a lot, a lot of these are like not-for-profits. They're also included, okay? Not-for-profit businesses. So that takes, you know, it's, the cross sometimes between economic development and community gets quite blurred, isn't it, as an area? So I think in essence, the idea is to look at the, look at the idea and say, okay, this has got to be, this has got to be either to the greater community or to an existing business, so.
And that comes down to my point of semantics, that sometimes it shouldn't be just a cool business survey because I probably want to open up, you know, at a personal profit. But it's more about, yeah, initiatives.
The business survey idea is just very loose at this stage. We're looking for a way to capture that. And we've certainly had discussions around the fact that not-for-profit is going to be as important for us going forward and how they get to deal in, when they're doing business with council. And that, that may be quite a wide, a wide term that's used, so. So we'll put a report out in June and then hopefully we can have some discussion about that at that stage.
Councillor McTavish.
Two questions. First, just follows on from councillor Wilson's, and it is clearly surveying existing businesses is one way to hear from existing businesses, how they are progressing and what might help them. But in an environment where we're actually wanting new business to be encouraged, surely we need to be asking those questions of people who currently aren't involved in business. And I wonder whether, for the same reason that councillor Wilson is questioning the approach on it, I appreciate it's very loose, but whether or not there are ways in which we can target each and every potential business person with questions about how the council might support them to move into that space, should they wish to. So that may involve recent graduates, for example. It may involve young people who are outside of the city, who are currently engaged in business activities elsewhere, what might make them move back here. I guess there are a whole range of potential people in that space and it's about whether or not we are clearly targeting those people.
One of the things that we're certainly looking at and something that worked very well in the economic development strategy was first being devised was that the focus groups that were put together and the information that came out of those proved to be more valuable than surveying. So that's certainly an area that we're looking at investigating because I think people are survey weary. They've had enough of surveying. Sometimes it's too targeted, sometimes it's not targeted enough. So we have, we certainly recognise that we have to be very smart about the way we go about this so that we're getting the kind of responses we, we need in order to make sure that we're doing it properly. So, yes.
And I guess my second question is just around the business clinics, which I think are really neat, why I'm making stuff really accessible. But I wondered whether or not there'd be any thought to perhaps partnering with community boards or other organisations in the peripheries of our city to effectively have a bit of a roving business clinic scenario. Maybe once a year, those business advisors could move into the uplying areas to support businesses in those, in those community board areas.
I think through the chair, Samaritan, that councillor McTavish. However, also our, our business development advisors have got quite a few meetings at nights now that they go to with different groups, et cetera. So it's a matter, it's a matter of basically trying to resource, you know, so we're not overloading everyone. There's engineering to need in meetings, there are ICT meetings, it just goes on and on. So it's just a matter of getting the mix right.
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, look, my question, my question was also about the business clinics because I realise it's only been running for two months, but has that shown some quite positive trends? Or is it looking not so bad?
Some of the, some of the trends that come out are new people just moving into business for the first time. Some of them are very interested in, well, they give a bit of a shock actually when we take them through business plans, et cetera, like this. And we ask them if they've done some market research and they say, oh, I suppose I should really do that. So you do get a lot, it gives them a check, if you like. They don't go rushing into things without having a decent look at it. There's others who got quite well-developed business plans where they're looking for possibly, how do we access the market into China? I've got this beautiful product, but I've heard I don't really know who to go to or how to do it. So what we can do is connect people like that and put them in the right place and get feedback from them. So there's a, there's a multitude of stuff. There's normally another person come to me, who's already in business, but they want to start a catering. You know, you get, you get all sorts of things. They come, you know, the spectrum is so wide, it's unbelievable. So another person come to me and she said, there's a big group of people who want a different type of food here in Deney. And I said, well, have you researched? She said, but I know, I know there's a group in Auckland like that too. I come from that community. I says, but how many of you in, is there in this city? And she said, look, I'm not, I'm not Togish. I don't fully know, but I think there's quite a few, but I'll start, I'm gonna... So there's all sorts of things like that where you try and say to them, look, just hang off a wee bit, why don't you do some research? You know, so it's a matter of trying to get people on the right track before they make some major mistakes too. So there's all sorts of things. I'd say coming back to, I would say in terms of big wins, I'd say those people probably feel they've got a big win because they've got the right information. But as concerns lots of employment generated right away, no.
Councillor Cal.
I was the person who started off this idea of the business service last year and talked to Paul about it. And the idea was generally to have a survey that was short enough and targeted enough for people to answer and allow people to tell us what we were doing that would get in the way or what we could do to help business and something that would allow us to benchmark it now. So I thought we could ask again in a year's time and be confident we could feel that we'd done better or not or how we were going. Are you confident that we can achieve that sort of thing?
I would say there'll be certain questions in the survey that will be relevant, but it'll also depend on how big we're going to, how wide we're gonna take that survey because we're also going to use, utilise not-for-profit because they're employers as well. And, but I'm sure there will be some, some good stuff come out of it. At the moment, we've got quite a number of surveys that come out through the city. There's quite a lot. And Margot's been going through those surveys, looking at the commonality, et cetera. And I think there's some gaps, I would all admit that. And I think we need to be asking the right questions. I think, you know, basically sometimes it's all in how you ask the question rather.
Do you think we'll be able to ask some so that we can do the survey again in a year's time and repeat it and get something that will allow us to have good comparative KPIs and stuff?
That in itself is what good surveys are about, is some sort of endurance to them. And I think that's what we'll be heading towards. Something that we, we're gonna make mistakes, we won't get every question right probably. But generally speaking, I think if we can refine it as we go forward, and most of it is still the same, I think that's what we're after. Something that gives, you know, continuity of response and...
Councillor Ben Sturrock.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My question relates to page 63, the second paragraph in the communication strategy section. And I think we're all welcome what you're talking about there in terms of the approach of DCC employees to the voters out there and the residents out there. But I wonder if, because a lot of that interface is now, will often be with people who are contract holders, not direct employees of the city, if you've given any thought to, not perhaps as the initial approach, but in an appropriate point of extending that culture change you're talking about to also encouraging people who are doing jobs on behalf of having a similar attitude and also encouraging those people to let the central brain of the octopus also know about other issues that are part of a particular silo, but about which there would be no information flowing otherwise. Is that clear what I mean?
Thank you, it is. I think we've run into that a couple of times with, with projects already, where the funder of the project sometimes is a bit removed from the person who may be doing the contract for them. So it's a matter of getting them all in together because in some cases you can talk down if there's that, and sometimes, you know, people say it's because of the council. It's not always because of the council at all, if we've found, but it's about trying to close that loop with who is involved, who's your contractor, who's your architect, et cetera, get them all involved together.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins.
Through the chair, I mean, I'd like to talk about what councillors Wilson and McTavish have already said about them. I have some like concerns about the scope of the business survey and it's, it is overall then perhaps is inferred by this. And I commend the coordinated approach to council interaction through the relationship, relationship manager pilot. But given that this whole project ostensibly aims to reduce the perception that government says no to business all the time, and that's often a myth.
It's very unrealistic.
And we see that uses as an excuse at a central government level to dilute the RMA by digress. Can I just assure us that this project doesn't put any unnecessary external pressure on departments that we do need to say no sometimes to do that?
I think that's one of the, one of the things, this, this project, you can say no in a different way, there's different ways of saying no. It's, we're not asking staff, if you like, that we work with to come up with something blatantly wrong and say, okay. Trying to do is say, let's, let's all sit around the table at the beginning of a project, let's air dirty linen at the front end, get everything worked out, then bring the client and once we've got those particular little issues worked out. And I think you're on a better front foot from that than coming in, you know, a person going from department to department, trying to find their way through the... So that's more or less the approach we're doing. We're trying to get those issues worked out at the front end so we know the things that we're gonna have to, come up with some creative thinking, if you like, get around within, still within the rules. Or those things we said, we need, might need to say, look, this is an impossibility, but if you've thought about this or you've thought about... So it's also creating an environment where you can look at some scope outside the, you know, just a trivial business.
It's probably too early to draw any meaningful data around the business findings, but I wonder, I mean, do you have an idea so far of how many of them are existing businesses and how many are at a conceptual stage?
You'd probably be looking at, at the moment, it's probably, I would say, close to 95% who are conceptual.
Right. And what happens after that? Is there anything that we can do to tie them into potentially other EDS strategies that are focusing on that or private providers who are operating in that space?
There's a, there's a number of things. Basically, you listen to the story first and it could be a simple thing about that they may not have any business plan at all. So you basically work them through a business plan so they can have a rough understanding. And you also give them a business plan, a way of doing things. And then you say to them, there's a number of things here can be agreed on that you should do. And they go through those, that list. We say, here's the numbers, call us back when you've done that. Or if you want a, a contact with someone who knows something about the market in China, this is what we suggest you do. I've got someone within the organisation, someone that works for us, will ring you and discuss the work here. So there's, there's a whole host of ways. It's not, it's not as simple as just saying, this is the way. There's no one way. And I think you'll find that in business, there's no one way.
But we are, we are actively following up.
We actively follow up as much as we can, yes.
Councillor Van Der S.
Thank you very much for this report. The, you talked about asking the right questions in a survey. Is one of the questions that you intend to ask not just about DCC compliance, but DCC's own tendering and procurement policies, which have been my major source of complaints from business for 30 years now?
Councillor Van Der S, at this stage, we haven't laid out the questions, we're just getting the, we've just reviewed all the past, all the past surveys that have been done. But there'll be certainly, we would hope, if you can input, we'll look at questions along those lines.
Okay. Is it, you're, you're already looking at basically having a handholding service for DCC compliance hurdles? And that's great and it's been done very successfully in other cities for a very long time. Are you also looking at making recommendations to changes in our tendering and procurement services to give them all the plain field for businesses to access?
Through the, through the chair, there's some, we've also got a procurement project within the strategy, which is economic development strategy, which we're looking at a number of things there as well. But as concerns the question, that particular question, we haven't got to that stage yet. We'll be looking, we'll be looking at a whole host of stuff.
Thank you. And on 6.2, you talked about the clinic, since February, having had a steady stream of appointments. Can you give us a rough idea how many appointments have been since February? I mean, how much is a steady stream?
Stead, you're trying to, in an hour, you're trying to two or three, it just depends on what the, what the query might be. But we'd like to give at least half an hour for someone to sit down and talk through their business idea or the problems they're having, or whether it's connections into council or whatever it might be. So in essence, there's been a couple of, a couple of those weeks that it hasn't happened, with holidays, et cetera, et cetera. I would say there's probably around about 15 to 20. Because what normally happened in the past, people would walk in off the street up to our customer service and want an appointment and the problem being that sometimes everyone was engaged doing other things. So it wasn't, so we thought we'd work the system where they could at least have something afterward where they can make an appointment, it worked well for them, it worked well for everyone. So that's sort of how the theory went on.
Thank you. Councillor Fox.
I'm just picking up on something councillor Van Der S raised with regard to procurement, just more general information, but the Audit and Risk Committee, that will be one of the early pieces of work that they'll be wanting to block out as around procurement policies generally. So there is going to be a focus on that.
There's also a discussion, Des and I were involved in the other day in the early stages of the other half of that, which is how do we get an understanding from smaller businesses around the city? How they see the city in terms of, of tendering and getting an understanding of whether they have what, you know, think about collaborative tendering with other businesses in town so that we get a little bit of understanding from the outside, how we might improve the need in businesses' chances of being successful in, in getting a certain tender. So there's, there's two sides. There's the city's process side and there's the work that EDU is starting to look at now, which is trying to get our local companies in a better position to actually be able to put in tenders that work.
It's great to hear that for a long time, that as a tender to the DCC, far from red carpet, it was usually a red flag when one of these documents arrived in the mail that was obviously designed not to be something that you could get to be successful in.
All right. Any other questions? If not, is someone prepared to move the recommendations? Move councillor Wiley, second councillor Lord. Is there any debate? If not, I'll put it. All in favour? No. Against? Kerry. Now we come to the last agenda item, which is items for consideration by the chair. Does anybody have any items that they would like the chair to consider? Councillor McTavish.
We just, we had recently the email that came in about the transfer of a partnership agreement requesting that we consider a motion on the subject. And I think probably it's most appropriate to be considered under economic development. I haven't thought of any other committee. So Pex, it's just a maybe discussion between you and the mayor as to whether or not it's appropriate here or appropriate council level.
Well, I will do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we will have three or four minutes operate while we change chairs.